Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I'd like to take a minute and go over the proposed agenda for the 4:00 p.m. work session meeting. First up is a presentation by Stephanie Isles, Director of Elections and General Registrar. She will be reviewing some proposed polling place relocations that would be necessary in the upcoming primary season. That's going to be followed by a presentation on the MEAC, the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference Basketball Tournament, presented by Sonya Stills, Commissioner with MEAC. We'll have our city planning update, presented by Mr. Tahan, the Director of Planning. That will be followed by an update on the Homeless Task Force, which was an initiative created by City Council in the current budget year. That briefing is going to be provided by Carol Sue McGee, Division Head with Norfolk Community Service Board. Lastly, we have a presentation on Keep America Beautiful Initiative. Ms. Sarah Stersing, our Education and Program Manager with Public Works, will be providing the briefing. So without any modifications or objections, I would like to call up Stephanie Isles, Director of Elections and General Registrar.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Isles. I'm the Director of Elections and General Registrar with the City of Norfolk. And before you, we have some information that we have as far as proposed polling place changes that we would like to make on behalf of the Norfolk Electoral Board. Larchmont Library will be undergoing extensive renovations in 2025, so we have been looking to find an alternate location for our residents over in the Larchmont Library precinct. After some review, we have a suggestion of Larchmont United Methodist Church right across the way at Jamestown Crescent. It has more parking than the library, it is accessible, and it is a bigger space, so there will be some more voter privacy, so we're excited about that. We currently have 1,833 registered voters in Larchmont Library precinct, of which 1796 are actively voting. This past November, 1,505 voters voted in that particular precinct, of which 631 voted on election day. So a lot of people are voting early, as you can see, whether it's by mail or in person. This is a picture of the front of Larchmont United Methodist Church with the handicap-accessible ramp and the lovely space that we would have inside with the barn doors that we could use for voting. It is ADA accessible, and there would be no need for improvements for us to go into that location. This is our current map of the Larchmont Library precinct. We would be moving from the blue star there up on the northwest to the red star on Jamestown Crescent. The dividing line for the precinct is Magnolia Avenue. Our second proposal is with regards to Calvary Revival Church. We're not able to use that facility anymore. We looked at several facilities in that area to see what might be available for us, and we are proposing Aldersgate United Methodist Church. So this is two Methodist churches we're proposing to go into for this, these moves. They're excited to have us. They actually host the civic leagues for this area for Glen Rock and Easton, and they have 3,220 registered voters, of which 3,115 are active. 1,905 cast their ballot in November. 887 of those, so about half, were in person. And this is the backside of the church, where we have a handicap-accessible ramp that goes into their social room that they use for civic league functions, and we would use that for voting. It is ADA accessible. There would be some minor improvements to signage and painting at the handicap spots to make it compliant with our ADA requirements. The reason we're coming to you right now on this is we are in a tight time crunch. We have primary elections. It's been announced Democratic and Republican primary elections June 17th. We start early voting on May 2nd. We have to notify our voters at least by 60 days prior to the election. This is what's moving my clock back. So, and this is, I'm sorry, a picture of moving it from Calvary Revival to Aldersgate, which is on Selger. It's closer to where Easton Preschool was, where we used to vote at, so that the people are familiar with that area.
Stephanie, real quick.
Yes?
Is it going to be called the Aldersgate?
I would recommend called it, we call Calvary Revival Calvary Revival Church.
Okay.
I would do it the name of the polling place to make it clear, unless you have a better name. I will entertain anything from the board. We used to call it Easton Precinct, and it was in Easton Preschool, so if you, I'm open to whatever suggestions y'all would like.
Good men, Super Ward's having a chance to get together and talk to the civic league.
Right, right, and I, we do plan on talking to the civic league, so that's just the name of the polling place, would be Aldersgate. We are hoping to get this on your April 8th for public hearing and council vote, so that we could send out the required voter information notices to every registered voter within both of those two precincts. And that would start with the elections beginning this June 17th, and of course, we have the gubernatorial elections on November 4th. So busy election season again, never-ending in Virginia, and I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Yes, Ms. Doyle.
Stephanie, thank you for quickly working on these locations. Will Larchmont and Aldersgate also be used in the November elections?
Yes. It would be Aldersgate going forward, and I would plan on, because the library is definitely going to be tied up for 2025 with the extensive renovations, and having worked construction before, they will tell you it'll take six to nine months, you can plan for 12 to 15 months because things happen in construction. So I would, I would make it yes for at least a year. We would, we would do a contract with the City Attorney's Office to make sure that we're good with that, and people may like it better over there. I don't know. I like it. It's a very nice space. They did nice renovations.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Stephanie, thank you. Paul, you do.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Before we call up Dr. Sonya Stills, I do want to acknowledge Ron Bailey before he leaves. Ron, why don't you stand up and let us know who you are, and what you go to, so we can see you. Ron is the General Manager for, for the casino, he's with Boyd Gaming, and he's recently been named the General Manager, and he'll be living in Norfolk.
That is correct.
He's already at work, but he will permanently be in place in about a month. So Ron, tell us who you are, and tell us what's happening over there.
Sure. I want to thank the media for great news coverage. Several people said, "I saw you on TV," so I certainly appreciate that. So yeah, if you haven't seen it, yeah, I'll be the new Vice President and General Manager of the Norfolk Casino. We are opening a transitional casino later this year on time, and additionally, we'll be opening the permanent casino in late 20, or fall 2027 on time. I've been with Boyd Gaming for the past 13 years. I've been a General Manager with the company since 2018. I have over 25 years of experience in gaming and hospitality. As I told some of the groups that I've spoken to, I'm a guy from the ground up. I've been working, started off in this industry as a bellman, and had the opportunity to work my way up through the industry. This is a great project for Boyd Gaming and for the Paw Monkey Tribe, and so we're just looking forward to, I'm looking forward to moving here, getting involved in the community. And yes, moving, I might be moving to Ward 6, Super Ward 6, so still looking for a house, don't know the area, but definitely looking forward to working with each and every one of you. We, you know, have a big task of hiring over 800 new team members, so there's going to be a lot of opportunities to involve myself with different organizations. We've met with several of the universities, meeting with Old Dominion tomorrow, so that we can start to work with everyone to try to figure out filling all of these great jobs. Additionally, you know, we will fill this job, these positions with people from the Hampton Roads area, so that is 100% our intention. We realize there's many, many assets in this area, including the naval base, which is the largest naval base, as you guys know, in the United States. These are things that I'm learning here. It would be foolish of us not to take advantage of those opportunities, whether it's spouses of service members or people leaving service and looking for great opportunities. Those opportunities absolutely will present themselves, and you know, we want our team member base to reflect our customer base, and so we're going to ensure that that happens as well. So, any questions?
Tell us what we're seeing. I know that there's been some mobilization. Tell us what we're seeing. How are you working with Light Real? How are you working with Amtrak? How will you be working with the tides to make sure that the citizens and those who travel, and the residents who travel to the task game, Amtrak, use Light Real? Tell us about that relationship, how it's going to be easy for them and painless, and we can make it all work.
No, certainly, and that's a, that's a great point. We've already worked with Amtrak. We've, we're providing a, we hired a minority company to do shuttle service for that parking space area over there for all, Amtrak, it's a, it's a short trip, but we've provided a shuttle service all day long for those customers taking the Amtrak on a daily basis. We met actually with the tides today, so we will be continuing the partnership that the Paw Monkey Tribe had with them, and looking forward to working with them. As far as the construction, that's ongoing, so construction is live, in action right now, and they're doing a lot of testing on the piles to ensure that we have a great sturdy facility. They're also doing work that will be, that the Army Corps of Engineers has asked to do regarding the seawall, that they're, that they're working on, so that, you know, we will mitigate any, you know, rising tide, king tide issues that may surface in that, in that area. So a lot of work, and what I will provide, Mr. Mayor, is we will continue to provide, that's why I'm here, and I'll be moving here April 1st. We will be providing our regular updates on the construction. Just brief information on the, on the transitional casino, so it is a 7,000 square foot structure. It's going to be two levels of that. 3,500 square feet will be gaming space. We'll have space for the lottery to be there. We'll have space for our team members to eat and things of that nature, and so we're definitely looking forward to getting that up and running. There'll be more to come very soon on our hiring plan for that space as well, so.
Any questions, comments, remarks for Ron Bailey or his team, I guess his whole team?
I have an army here. We have several members from Boyd Gaming. I have Lisa Speller, who will be assisting with community engagement on our behalf. Ross, my, basically my right hand at this point, who's been shuttling me through town, introducing me to everyone in town, so really appreciate their service. And we have two of our senior leaders from Boyd Gaming, from Government Affairs, Ryan Saltz as well, Vice President of Government Affairs, and our Vice President of PR, David Schraub, as well in Communications. So it's my pleasure. Thank you.
How much money we're going to generate with the contemporary casinos, since we're in the budget discussion, so that the city manager can plan to spend that.
Thank you. You guys can leave if you wish.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts. Sonya, there she is, Sonya Stills. Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you. This is my camera.
Well, I am super excited to be here, you know, and as, and please excuse my phone, because everybody is definitely contacting me, and I don't know whether they need tickets or not. It don't matter, I didn't answer. But I am so thrilled to be here, and first and foremost, what I want to say is congratulations for the City of Norfolk being our Corporate Partner of the Year. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the partnership. The tournament has grown so much, and so we really want to thank you for all the work that you have done, how you welcome our alumni and our fans, and they always have something positive to say, and, and the City of Norfolk has been such a great partner to work with, and I hope we continue to do that forever and ever and ever. So I just want to say that first and foremost. You all have in front of you our scheduled events, so I want to earmark a couple of new things that we have. Last year, we had our first Fan Fest on Saturday, and this year, we're having it on Friday and Saturday, which is awesome. So we'll have vendors, music. We have also partnered with the R&B Block Party, so they will be hosting our Fan Fest. In addition to that, they will also play a part in the official concert. Another thing that we, of course, we have our College Fair, we have a Read with the MEAC program in our connection with the Norfolk Public City Schools, and we'll be celebrating our first-place school, which is the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont, who actually won $2,000 award, and so we're going to bring a DJ and cheerleaders and all that, have a great time with them on Tuesday morning. So we're really excited about that. This is the 17th year that we've had the Read with the MEAC program, and that's one of our jewels that we've had and been very involved with. The College Fair, of course, we have all of our eight-member institutions, admissions office that's going to be here, and a new thing that we're going to have is College Row. College Row will be throughout the week at the tournament, down in the hallway to the exhibition room. That's going to be College Row, so our admissions offices will be set up the whole time. The admissions officers will be visiting local high schools throughout the week, as well as being in the venue, so that's something new that we've started. We wanted to make sure that we had enough time and opportunities for the high school students to interact with our institution, so I'm really, really thrilled about that. Our theme is homecoming. For the next three years, this is going to be a MEAC homecoming, so everybody come, enjoy. It is a homecoming for everybody, not only for our member institutions, alumni, but of course, our fans. We want Norfolk to be the place to be, and I wish the General Manager was still here, because I'd say him stop by the MEAC as well, so that we can have some conversations and let some money flow over there to us too as well. City Manager, if that's okay with you, okay? Right now, I'll let you know our leaders. Norfolk State, of course, is, for men's and women's, are currently running number one, and so, and I always say, as long as they don't mess with my money, they should be in the finals, because they are doing an outstanding job, even though I am neutral. So I'm just going to say, I am neutral. One other thing that we have is new, is our farewell brunch by Tony Brothers at his restaurant, and that will be on Sunday. That's our last gathering before our family leaves and goes back home, and we'll see them next year. So with that being said, if there are any questions of me, I am more than willing to answer them.
Questions for Sonya Stills. Well, Ms. Johnson.
I just want to say thank you so very much for making work of your home. Many of us look forward to MEAC being here, the excitement that you bring, but also the partnerships in the community and your positive role models that you have representing every single college that represents the MEAC too. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you. I will bring that back to the group. I'm very, very excited, you know, our, our headquarters is here, and so this is definitely home for us, and, and we want to continue to grow here in Norfolk, and so anything that we can do to connect with the community, that's what we want to do, so just reach out to us, and whatever we can, we'll dig right on in. I have my Deputy Commissioner, Ray Noe Dito, there. I always call him boss, and I do whatever he asks me to do, but we are here to help connect our institutions, our office with the community.
Well, Sonya, before you leave, let me just say thank you for recognizing the city as your corporate partner. We certainly appreciate it, appreciate that, that recognition, but more importantly, introducing this new concept, College Row. High school juniors, we have some educators here, got a principal here, a teacher, counselor, and a former school board member, two former school board members. That's vitally important to introduce high school juniors and seniors and their families, because selecting a college is a family decision, and the fact that you're going to have that College Row, so that they can interact with admissions and other individuals from, from the colleges and the universities, and hopefully meet the chancellors and the presidents. I think that's just wonderful, so thank you for just incorporating that.
No problem.
For our scholars.
No problem. Oh, I just want a little thing. Y'all are going to see something new when you get into the arena. We have a new VIP area, so y'all will be in the VIP area when you come, so just, just wait, just walk up in and you'll see it, okay? And then y'all let me know how you feel, okay? Thank you so much, Mayor.
You don't have to be neutral, do we? You don't have to be neutral. We don't have to be.
I have to be, and I just keep everything in my heart. Thank you all so much.
We wish all of our student athletes very well in their schools. Where we fall. Thank you, Sonya. All right, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. Mr. Tahan, Director of Planning, is prepared to give you the city planning update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Members of City Council, I have one item to update the council on, zoning text amendment, as well as an update on zoning inspections that was requested by the manager for me to provide to the council. The one item that I, that I'm presenting to you from the Planning Commission is a zoning text amendment cleanup, as we, as we call them. Normally, throughout the year, zoning staff goes through and reviews the zoning ordinance as they're utilizing it, and they find inconsistencies or internal, internal misreferences in the zoning ordinance that need to be cleaned up in order to have the zoning ordinance function as was proposed. These proposed amendments contain no significant policy issues or changes, rather they reflect the cleanup of the minor technical errors and omissions that have been identified. Of these seven, starting with the first one, the first one is to clarify how required ground floor uses are measured in the downtown zoning district. There was concern about how that was measured. That is supposed to be measured based on the frontage of the building, not based on the entire first floor of the building. The whole point of that is to have active uses that face the street, so we wanted to assure that the language was clarified. That is how it was been interpreted, and for generally utilized, but we wanted to make sure the words read like plain English, rather than someone having to figure it out. We're including common terminology for select use definitions. As the ordinance sits over time, there are a number of uses that have outdated terms that are used for them, so one, one is used merchandise sales. We're planning on adding to the definition, so call that also referred to as thrift stores, just so people, when they're looking for it, if they go to search through the zoning ordinance, they can find these items that they're looking, they're looking to, to try to find out how they're supposed to operate. And also for vendor and produce stand, we're also adding also referred to as food truck. So again, these are common terms that are used for these. If they, again, we have that digital version of the zoning ordinance, if they choose to search for those terms, they'll be able to find these, rather than trying to understand what we call them in the ordinance. Another one is to address conflicts regarding fuel canopy signage. In the sign chapter, we have a conflict with what's located in the requirements of the, of gas stations and the performance standards. One says that you can have signs on the canopy, the other says you can't, and so this is to clean that up to assure that it's consistent with our existing sign standards, which do allow signage on the canopy. Next is a reference to conditional use permit requirements for townhouses. There's a reference, internal reference about parking and where parking can be located for townhouses. It references an incorrect zoning ordinance section. You actually have to apply for a conditional use permit to put driveways in front of, in the front yard of townhouses and proposed development. It points to nowhere at the moment. It just says, meet these requirements, and then the requirements are there. It's hidden somewhere else that you need a conditional use permit, so we're cleaning that up. Next one is to clarify the form standards applicable to two-family dwellings. What we're seeing a lot of in some areas that have larger lot sizes, they're allowed to build two-family homes as two single-family homes on one lot, and what we wanted to do is clarify that these are all functioning as single-family homes, so they should meet all the same requirements of single-family homes for how they're supposed to look and form. So we clarify, we haven't been enforcing it in that manner, but we're also clarifying it in the language to assure that each of these have the requirements of form, which include porches and other items, and transparency and other things that are required in the Last two, last one, the last two, one includes the location of side-loaded garages and how you're supposed to measure the setback. The zoning ordinance addresses that if you're going to have a front-loaded or a garage that faces the front yard, that it should be recessed and set back in the traditional and coastal character districts from the main facade of the house. It does not address, it's not very clear on if it's a side-loaded garage, if it's supposed to be set back. The form standards say that the side-loaded garage is required to have transparency and windows in it if you utilize it, so it makes no sense for it to also then be set back to cause articulation in the building. So for consistency purposes, we're adding a footnote that says that it does not apply to side-loaded garages. And the last one is to align with state law changes that deal with civil penalties. This would mostly focus on our enforcement of short-term rentals, but it does clarify the amounts that can be charged for civil penalties in those processes. By 6-0 vote, the Planning Commission recommends approval of these text amendment cleanup Last item that I have is just an update on zoning inspections. The council is well aware that previously, prior to 2023, city planning had shifted zoning inspections to Neighborhood Services. I believe that was in 2018 or so, through the, through, through just changes of, and focusing of inspection processes. At that time, we had one zoning inspector that was utilized to do conditional use permit and rezoning inspections, and all the other functions were transferred out to another department. In the fiscal year 2023, four positions were added to planning, which is, which is now known, these, those positions are known as the Business Compliance Unit positions, which are essentially commercial zoning inspections. Commercial zoning inspections was brought back to planning in order for us to make sure that we have a handle on the enforcement for our, those that operate any of those uses that have potential impacts on their neighbors, whether they be auto repair or restaurants, or those that have entertainment. We have, we have the group, the Business Compliance Unit, which takes a very proactive approach, going out, walking their area, speaking to operators, and utilizing that time to educate them as much as enforcing the ordinance. This past budget cycle, the manager transferred five positions from Neighborhood Services to complete out that all zoning inspections were transferred to planning. So with that, we, we received those five positions and essentially created a residential zoning inspections team in order to round that out, so that we can have full coverage throughout the whole city. These are the two groups, how they function. We have two team leaders, one that deals with residential design and residential inspections, as the zoning ordinance has lots of inspections that deal with that, as well as our continued use of the Business Compliance Unit. I'll say in last year, prior to the transfer of the positions, we lost two folks to other localities, well, one to the City Treasurer's Office, and one to another locality who became their zoning administrator in Suffolk, which is, which is great for them, but left the hole for us as we were trying to train people and get people moving, moving up in the process. But the Business Compliance Unit still continued to move forward and perform their inspections, not just on a complaint basis, but also as a, as they do their walking of their areas in order to be proactive in doing those inspections for, for the businesses. Along with that, we have two, currently two vacant positions in our zoning inspection side for residential inspections. I would say, we actually tried to fill those twice, and then the candidates dropped out multiple times on us, so we're still working on trying to get those positions filled. But we, we do have a good core team that's going and doing these, these zoning inspections throughout the whole city, and we also added, we converted one of the inspections positions to a management analyst to help us clean up the data and assure that information that's being provided to the public and through our system, our permitting system, is clear and, and robust. This map here shows the assignments, the current assignments of the inspectors. What we've changed in this, in this process is to ensure that we have inspectors assigned to areas, rather than just running around the city. Part of that is we're using the, the method that was utilized for our short-term rental team, so Tom, as everyone knows, is our short-term rental inspector. Everybody in Ocean View knows him, that operates short-term rentals. He goes and speaks to the civic leagues, and we're using that as the method to teach the other inspectors, to assure that they're familiar with the civic leagues, they're participating with the community members, and that they're able to have close ties with them, so they can just call them. Dean Cooper on our team that does the residential inspections, he has very close ties with his area, especially since he does the residential inspections dealing with the homes at Huntersville. He knows, the community knows to contact him if they have any issues. Same thing as we continue throughout this process, that we're hoping to have our inspectors be tied into the community, so that they're able to be called directly, rather than having things go around, although we do want it reported through the Norfolk Cares Call Center. We also want to assure that we have responsive, timely, responsive and timely inspections to, to each of these complaints and concerns that the citizens may have. And so we've broken the city up into areas. The inspectors go and inspect most of those areas. Those that are on the Business Compliance Unit have the areas that have the majority of the corridors, the commercial corridors in the city. So you'll see, there's a one that stretches all of Military Highway, that's one of those of the Business Compliance Unit, and one that encapsulates downtown and Old Dominion University area, University Village, I'm sorry, Monarch Way. Those areas are covered by one inspector that do those inspections from the Business Compliance Unit, while the residential inspectors handle the more residential areas. And of course, our short-term rental inspector has all of the Ocean View area, and has added on to his work program the zoning inspections in that area as well. and has added on to his work program the zoning inspections in that area as well. What we've done here also is we've pro-strained each of the inspectors to be able to do everything in the zoning ordinance. So every inspector can do a short-term rental inspection, every inspector can do a Business Compliance inspection, and every inspector can do a residential inspection. So we're assuring that we're not going to have any gaps. And again, Jeremy, our zoning administrator, has made sure that this was one of the key things that we had, so that we don't just end up with a gap, and we just hope that there aren't a lot of complaints when someone resigns or gets a promotion or something like that. So the team has done a very good job of training each other and getting everyone up to speed, and it's been a very good process to see them go out there and take ownership of their areas as they continue to do their inspections. And again, just to reiterate, the key things that we focus on through zoning inspections is first zoning ordinance compliance. That doesn't necessarily mean a violation the first time. That means educating somebody. So it goes towards education and then also knowledge of the areas, so that they're familiar with the things that are going on. So when someone says, hey, that convenience store on the corner, they'll know exactly what that means to them, or that new restaurant that popped up. They'll know what that means when someone from the community says it. And so hopefully, we'll already have had eyes on it, but at that point, we at least have someone that's tied into the community and understands what's going on. And then after that, if we can't get any compliance through education and discussions with the property owners, we then will also move forward in enforcement. Inspections have continued to tick up throughout the fiscal years. We're on track to have the most zoning inspections that we've had in the last three years. Just again, with follow-ups, not as many violations thankfully, but we do have a significant number of violations that the team is tracking as well. So I'm very happy with the team's progress as they continue to be part of the community, as well as doing their walks, which is important, which is one of the key charges of the Business Compliance Unit, to talk with those businesses. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions or concerns.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Bobby, for the presentation. Related to this a little bit, so years ago, when we voted on allowing food trucks in Norfolk, I, there were some, there was some opposition. Andy Perugiero was opposed to it mainly due to the competition to brick-and-mortar restaurants. When we voted on that, we envisioned that we would have actual food trucks that would drive to a location, an event. They would probably have a generator, or if they had access to power, they would plug in, and then they would pick up and they would leave. So nothing that Bobby or his team has done, but in the spirit of what a food truck should be, I think we've had a few folks taking advantage of it. Little Creek Road, we have a food truck that's been there for less than a year. It started off as the food truck, I said, and it has evolved into an 18-wheeler that has stayed permanently parked. It does not move. They had power installed, a meter installed by Dominion Energy. They don't have a bathroom on this 18-wheeler that I'm aware of. And the brick-and-mortar restaurants are a little bit upset that this has been allowed by the city, but according, Bobby, you could probably explain more, it is allowed. And I just, I think we need to change something, because my idea of a food truck is not a permanent fixture that doesn't move and is taking, it's really a restaurant on wheels that doesn't move. It's a big space. It's got a big kitchen. So they're using, it is on a private property, and they've established, so I don't know what we can do. City Attorney's Office can look into this, and if there's any recommendations, I know you were cleaning up some language, but I don't know if we ever defined a food truck in when we voted on it. I can't remember. It was so long ago.
Yeah, I don't think we anticipated this, and I need to come back with you and give you some options.
Yeah.
The food trucks are loosely defined, and that's just why this is, this one is technically needs the ordinance farm towers. As Mr. Pishko noted, we probably should come back with some proposals to the council for consideration.
Any further questions? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Um, sure. Um, as far as the code enforce, enforces, I think the educational part, I like that. But in between the educational part of enforcement and then enforcement, I think there needs to be follow-up. That's what's missing, because when something goes to Norfolk Cares, someone goes out, but what the citizens depend on is that we never come back. So with that, the behavior continues. So we never resolve what the issue is. So it should be education, follow-up, and enforcement. That's my recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I have the numbers of the team. Our re-inspections, which are our follow-up inspections, are significantly jumping this year. Almost 800 additional inspections, so that follow-up is happening. I can speak for at least my team as they do their inspections. That's part of that education piece. We don't want to just leave someone hanging. We know that we have to follow up on it, because we understand that the data is tracked. It needs to be reported back out to the other citizens.
Yeah, I think that that should be with all departments, that reinspection part and then the enforcement, so that citizens will know, we're willing to work with you, however, if you don't, here are the consequences. It's been going on too long. Secondly, one thing that concerns me is the threat to our code enforcement, our community specialists, those who are boots-on-the-ground in the community. Personally, I feel that no employee should experience a threat in any neighborhood in the city of Norfolk. So with that said, I want to ensure that should an employee that is boots-on-the-ground in our community, that they feel safe, and that should they be threatened, it should be reported and a follow-up should happen with the police. Again, the reason this is happening is because of the reinspection part of it. Our employees go out in between the enforcement, which may or may not take place, because there's no reinspection, and therefore, the behavior continues. I've had a few reported to me, and I can honestly say I was not pleased that number one, an employee was threatened, that it may or may not have been reported, and that the police was not involved. So I would like to see that across the board for every department in the city of Norfolk, because it is happening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. The next report we have is the homeless task force update. I'd like to invite up Carol Sue McGee, Division Head with Norfolk Community Service Board Department.
Good afternoon. So I am here on behalf of my fabulous director, Dr. Nathan Woodard, to talk to you just a little bit about the task force and some updates about housing and homeless services overall. So for those of you who may not know, I think the task force has been one of the most visible parts of housing and homeless services of late, and that is, of course, thanks to the support of council, the support of you, Mr. Mayor, and the city recognizing the need to be innovative in the way that we address this ongoing issue. So I want to express our gratitude to you for that. But it is now part of the Community Services Board's whole Housing and Homeless Services Division, which includes a robust outreach team that has a couple of different components. Some folks work with anyone experiencing homelessness, whereas other staff work with folks with a serious mental illness or substance use disorder, who are also experiencing homelessness. We also have three distinct subsidized housing programs, so that as we're moving people through the process and helping people become housed, we've got a rapid rehousing program and two permanent supportive housing programs. And with those three programs together, we subsidize housing for over 250 individuals, also providing case management, because we know that the transition from homelessness into housing can be stressful, and there are lots of unknown variables. So our team goes in at least once a month to make sure people are settling into housing and have whatever else they need to be successful, whether that be medical care, mental health care, social security benefits, a job, education, reunion with families, whatever it is that they require. So overall, we have a very robust team that believes very strongly in what they do. And the incorporation of the task force under the CSB in October has just broadened our ability to address individuals experiencing homelessness across the city. So I wanted to make sure you guys all had information about who to call and when. You guys answer to your constituents, and you're talking with people all the time about these concerns. And so there are different numbers for different purposes. First and foremost, if anyone appears to be in crisis or in danger, please call 911. The police get great training on housing and homeless services through their academies, and they know to reach out to us. So if individuals or families are experiencing homelessness, everyone's encouraged to register through the housing crisis hotline. What folks will tell you is, I call and they don't help me. It's not a quick fix. What it is, is a registration of your need for support, and it prompts a referral to my team to follow up and reach out to you and start the process of providing services. The Center on Tide Water Drive, I cannot say enough about the work this team does. So this is the city's funded homeless shelter on Tide Water Drive next to the Burger King. We are open for day services for any individual experiencing homelessness 365 days a year. So if someone is not yet in a shelter, please encourage them to come to the center. They can meet with an outreach worker right there in-house. They can get lunch, take a shower, wash some clothes, and start the process of housing planning, and also sign up to be a resident at the center. And then the Housing and Homeless Services Division, that's our main number. If you've got someone needing outreach assistance, or you'd just like to talk a little more with a team member about something that you've witnessed, you are certainly welcome to reach out, either of course to DCM James Rogers, to Dr. Woodard, or to this number, so that someone on my team can follow up. So a little bit about the task force specifically. As you're well aware, this team came into existence in February, March of this calendar year. When it came under our division in October, there were 57 households in services with the task force and housed in various hotels. So this speaks to most definitely the need that it has been filling for folks who have a hard time with traditional shelter resources. Since we absorbed the task force in October, 19 of those individuals have self-resolved. What that means is that we're working with our, our team works with the folks in the task force to divert, meaning we talk to family members, we reconnect people with families. We've been able to purchase train tickets and bus tickets to get people out of state to reunite with families, which has been very rewarding. And 23 more have been referred to Housing Solutions through the Continuum of Care, which is the Planning Council's larger regional effort. So there's been a lot of great movement and great progress with the folks with whom we are currently working. So we're down from 57 households down to 20 households currently in hotels. Some have been placed at the center. Some have been moved on into housing programs through the Planning Council. So lots of success, and those who are still waiting for housing, we're working with them to make sure that they get connected. Blending the task force team, which brought with it some amazing talent, with our traditional outreach teams had allowed us to increase our diversion efforts. So you know, the hotel is a great short-term option for some folks, but it's not the final solution. So our team has a wealth of knowledge about diversion, linkage to shelters, to make sure that we are being mindful about our utilization of the hotels. We've created some structure and some empowerment of our hotel guests, so we're limiting those hotel stays unless there are exigent circumstances, and working to transition people into available shelter beds whenever possible. And we empower people absolutely to be a part of that planning process. We want to know what housing looks like for you. We want to know what your goal is and make sure that we're linking you to everything you might need to get there. So homelessness in Norfolk looks a lot like homelessness across the country right now, which is that the numbers are starting to climb. This is, you know, nothing unfortunately that surprises us, but we're very grateful for the city's continuous support of our team's efforts to try to address this. So the support of our housing programs, our outreach teams, the center, the task force, and our brand-new prevention program, which we're about to get off the ground, which should help some things as well. When we talk about the reasons for homelessness, lack of affordable housing across the country continues to be the number-one cause and the thing that we continue to advocate for. But I also just want to speak to the partnerships that we've created through this effort. So we could not do the work we do without several other departments across the city. If you work for DCM Trista Pope, you've probably been of service to me and my team. Her team does great work. Denise Gallup and her team have been incredibly supportive, because the one thing that this has brought to us that's new to the CSB is working with homeless families. We've only ever dealt with individuals and adults, so we are absolutely still learning, and Denise and her team have extended very gracious offers of assistance, education, and collaborating, so we can make sure that our families with children have what they need to be safe. So that's a lot in just a few minutes. If you have questions, I am happy to answer them.
Yes. I did want to, I'm looking at your last slide here, homelessness in Norfolk. So I'm taking it, just with you all, it's the emergency, totally not out there. And then you see all these other partners that you're working with here. Do you work with the Redevelopment and Housing Authority at all?
Most definitely. Yes, sir, absolutely. So the Housing Authority has a great arrangement with us, where they've been able to take a certain percentage of their Section 8 turnovers and actually commit them to our housing committee, so that folks who are graduating out of our housing programs can move into a Section 8 voucher, as long as they meet those criteria. And so they've been wonderful partners. Absolutely, yes.
And the other, thank you. You mentioned the homeless shelter and then the increasing lack of affordable housing and so forth. So what's like our current capacity right now? As far as the shelter versus, you know, what future potential things, potential things that we might need to keep the capacity?
Great question. So as far as capacity is concerned, the center is one of three shelters here in Norfolk, the Union Mission, of course, and the Salvation Army Men's Shelter on 19th Street. So our shelter can accommodate 100 single adults. And so that's the capacity there. We are able to extend a little bit further during very inclement weather, where we bring in more people, but that's where we normally sit, is at 100. As far as the task force is concerned, where we're utilizing hotels, we really try to keep that around 20 to 30 at the most, and make sure that we're moving folks into available shelter beds as they come available. So the need is certainly there. We work with our team to try to come up with innovative approaches. We're looking at a little bit at shared housing, which is a new thing for us to think through. But there will always be a need to provide as many different creative resources as we can to make sure we're meeting the needs of people who have been through all kinds of stuff and may or may not feel comfortable in a shelter. Absolutely.
Questions, Mr. Page?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your report. I just want to get caught up on a couple of things. I know last year, the city manager brought in an individual that worked for you guys that was supposed to be our direct contact, his council. And I know we had a couple of challenges with that after that individual we brought in, and I was told that this is the person that we contacted. Me and the city manager had a meeting about contacting deputy city managers and then contacting the individual, which caused a whole bunch of problems, because I know one day we had an instance where this person saved someone's life, mitigating violence that was about to happen to someone that was on a mental health episode, exposing themselves to a population that was going to deal with that themselves. Since, I've kind of been distant to the process with you guys, but I still get a lot of calls, a lot of folk that I give numbers to of these programs that continuously call me and continuously do not have a place to live. So in the great work that we're doing, let us remember those that we're not reaching.
Absolutely.
Please make sure when you come to us, you come to us with those numbers, so we could be a good part of the solution and the awareness. Because for most of us, when you guys come and report, that's what we take it as and we stand up, and we fight against any pushback based on what you tell us. But I have evidence that shows that there's still a great deal of folk that suffer from this that we're not reaching, and particularly in workforce. So I want some hands-on evidence of some things that are working to mitigate this going forward. I know we have the facility on Tide Water Drive. I know we've been losing rooms on Military Highway.
Yes, sir.
But it seems like this problem is still going. And there are areas where it's a whole lot better. But it's about to warm up. Folk are going to come back outside.
Yes, sir, they are.
And they're going to be in those places, Military Highway at the intersection of Virginia Beach Boulevard.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir, absolutely.
A little encampment that was on the interstate about two months ago. Somehow a car went in there. We didn't even know people were living in that encampment on the off-ramp to Military Highway, the second off-ramp, if you need to, from downtown. So please, just keep us updated.
Absolutely.
Still, if you reach out directly to me with issues that are in workforce, I want to be hands-on with this. And just anything that I can do to help.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I really appreciate that.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Um, thank you for the presentation. And one of the things that I would like to highlight is this team.
Hmm, yes, ma'am.
I've seen it in action. I've been out there in the community when it's three or four or five groups from various departments. And it is successful because you all work so closely together.
Absolutely.
And doing my, what I call rideabouts in the city. For some reason, I can call usually the DCMs. And for some reason, my voice goes low like I'm covert operations. And I'm talking to them, James, or whether it's, it's Trista. Are you all right, Ms. Johnson? Yes, but I need some help. And I give them a full description of what I see. And in no time, the team is there to assist, and they give me a report back. And sometimes I want the citizens to realize, although we're boots on the ground, people have rights. And so when we see them out in our city, they have the right to deny service. That's heartbreaking, but they still have that, that right. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because citizens have to understand that the city, the council, and the boots-on-the-ground, all of those departments, various departments, we, we're doing all that we can, but if someone denies our help, we've done all that we, we can do. So I want to say to human services and neighborhood development, all of these groups of people, to actually see you all in action is something wonderful, and it should always remain this way. The last thing I would say, wherever our centers are located, I would like to see more beautification around the centers, because what we project is what we get. And since they're already homeless, we have to provide them at least a safe and beautiful place that they can recognize as just their home away from home, until they can do better. Not only with the centers, but any other businesses around the centers that we've identified as centers, we need to hold businesses accountable. And I'm talking about the one at Tidewater Drive and Virginia Beach Boulevard. Behind that center, there's 18-wheelers and things, high grass. So that's all I want to say. And thank you again to every team that you have listed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for the work that you're doing across the city. Your first bullet point there has caught my attention. I'm wondering if you could provide some additional detail on the, the actual amount of the year-over-year increase? Also speak to the year-over-year trend? And then how frequently are we doing these point-in-time counts?
Oh, very good question, thank you. So in the city of Norfolk, first of all, this is the first time that we're seeing an increase in more than a decade. So we've seen these numbers steadily declining as more shelters and more subsidized housing programs have been funded. So this is the first time we've seen an increase nationwide. The increase for us goes from about roughly 430 in the city of Norfolk up to a little over 500. Now, this does include folks who are staying in shelters, like the Union Mission and the center. So it's not, it's not totally people who are what we call unsheltered. But the unsheltered count is the count that's going up. The folks who are, you know, could not make rent and are now working to full-time jobs but living in their vehicles, because they don't have enough for that first month's rent and security deposit. So that was the first question, and I got all locked up and forgot the other one, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, sir.
How frequently are the counts?
The counts are done every January. This is a nationwide thing. Everybody does it on exactly the same day we do it, at the end of January, because that makes sure that as many people as possible who are going to go into a shelter are going to go in the, in the middle of winter. So that helps us get the most accurate count. But there's a formula that's much more complicated than I understand, so that if we see 40 people, they calculate it and ramp up for what that actually probably means, because, of course, we don't see everyone. So once a year in January. Yep.
All right. Yes, Mr. Smigel.
Sorry, we're continuing the conversation. So I, and I don't want to come across as not having a heart or being compassionate. There, there are those that choose to not be homeless, you know, that choose to be homeless. We offer support. They still choose to be homeless. So I'm, when I'm discussing this, I'm discussing those folks that are choosing to do this. I, one, I realize that Ocean View is very far away from downtown, but we've had some issues over the last couple of years at Ocean View Beach Park with camping out. So I know in, in 2024, I think it was June, the US Supreme Court said that localities can now issue criminal summons for camping. Went before they couldn't, even if shelters are provided. And I, and I really, like I said, I'm not trying to go down that path. But I also have to think about my constituents and people who want to go to a beach park and have a great experience, and they can't because some folks are choosing to do drug use, to cause crime, to do sexual things out in public. And I, I really think that my compassionate side can't forgive that behavior and what is happening to my constituents and our constituents who want to have that beach experience. And so I don't know what we can do. I know some of that is based off of state law, Bernard, and on what we can do to really have some enforcement with the camping out in parks. And the, now that we have this opportunity, if we've given opportunities for them to get help and support and services, and it just reaches a point where they're refusing, and it's causing issues for our citizens, so.
Sure, absolutely. So, absolutely heard, Mr. Smigel. So we, we always encourage that when you see someone who is breaking the law, housed or unhoused, alert the authorities. We're certainly not trying to say that people who are experiencing homelessness, that we, we're okay with people just breaking the law. So we work in great concert with our park rangers, especially at Ocean View Beach Park and other places where people tend to feel comfortable staying a little bit after sunset, even though that's not allowed, to try to provide a little bit of notice. So we'll have, we'll work with Kimberly's team, the Codes Division, all of them, to go out and post notice and say, "Hey, I, I see that you're here. You can't be here. We're going to give you three days or five days to, to move somewhere else." And then we, our outreach team goes out when that notice is posted, and we go out when it's time to clean up the area to try again, because sometimes people become a little bit more motivated to shelters when they don't have any alternatives. But we also, you know, the Community Services Board, we are a behavioral health agency, so we, we're very mindful of people's rights as well. So if, if you're violating someone else's rights, we want to alert the appropriate authorities. But to the extent that people are able to exercise choice without infringing on the rights of others, we honor that as well. It's a delicate balance, no question.
I just want to make sure that our park rangers and police understand all of this. I don't think, sometimes they do. The feedback that we've received is, oh, no, they can be there because it's their right to be. It's a public space. And I know we have some newer police officers that may not know that when they respond, because our park rangers sometimes cannot, they can only go up to a certain point, right? And I know, appreciate the security surveillance that's down there now that should help with some of this. But I do want to go back to Bernard about if there's anything that we need to do locally to, with the, the change with the Supreme Court's ruling.
Let me double-check. I, I don't know of anything that we need to do. The court, the case you're talking about isn't much older than a, a year. So I'm, I'm make, I need to make sure that we don't have any old provisions handicapping us. But I, I think what we're talking about is the compassionate enforcement that you've been discussing now on that camping on the beach is not a constitutional right. And so that, Kat Taylor in my office has got this as one of her areas. So I'll ask her to be in contact so that we can make sure of that we are attending to this. And we have the authority to, to do it, and we want to do it compassionately.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation we have. I'll invite up Sarah Sturzinger, our Education and Program Manager with Public Works. She's going to talk about the Keep America Beautiful Greatest American Cleanup Initiative.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. On a lighter note, I'm going to pivot us now, although I do want to clean those beaches up. And we can help with that beautification as well in partnership with CSB, as we're always willing to do that. Yes, tonight, I am here to talk to you all about the Greatest American Cleanup. It's an initiative that's being kicked off by Keep America Beautiful in partnership with the America 250 Organization in an effort to try and make the country as beautiful and clean moving forward to July 4th of 2026, our 250th anniversary and the sesquicentennial of the United States. We have a problem with litter. I hear about it every day. I'm fighting for it every single day across the city to engage as many people as possible. But since 2009, there has actually been a 50% decrease, which I know is hard to believe, in litter, and it's thanks to the partnerships, the collaborations, and the volunteers that we have in our city and both internally and externally to deal with this. These are some numbers that we have just from the last fiscal year. You can see we had 6,100 and some change volunteers fighting for about 106,000 pounds of litter that we cleaned up. We're, we're chasing it. We're chasing it really hard. Unfortunately, it's, it's a hard thing to grab. We are doing all kinds of education and outreach to make people understand how important it is to bag their trash and not put loose-leaf pieces of litter in a trash can as they're walking past it only to blow back out. We have saved the city around $360,000 and some more change, but yet you can see in that photograph, that is from July 4th of last summer, the, actually July 5th. That was the day after. We do cleanups on the 3rd, and we do cleanups on the 5th. And that's a much better picture than we saw the year before, unfortunately. Community Beach, Sarah Constant, and Ocean View Beach were the worst that I've ever seen in the history of my doing this, even as a volunteer for Keep Norfolk Beautiful way back. So we're fighting it, we're chasing it, and we feel like the Greatest American Cleanup is an opportunity to reach as many people as possible to join us in our effort. This is a three-year campaign, as I, as I mentioned, and with that, there is a pledge that the city can take to say Norfolk, our beautiful city, is going to be a part of this. As a historic city that's been around since the beginning of our country, we felt like it was a great opportunity to join forces with thousands of other cities across the United States that have already committed to taking the pledge and, and being a part of this effort. It's really simple, you know, gain, raise the visibility, challenge partners internally and externally across the city, bring more people under the tent. Also, maybe challenge some of our neighbors to be a part of the process and, and maybe have some activities where we can be in joint concert to clean around the river, maybe with Portsmouth. And also just showcase some of the sustainability goals that we already have in place in the city. And we work very closely at Keep Norfolk Beautiful with the Resilience Office, Environmental Sustainability, Parks and Recreation, and really having a strong focus on this. We can all kind of work together under this banner of this huge national effort that's going to take place. Plus, also, it's an opportunity to partner deeper with the schools and sort of the non-traditional learning organizations to bring more of the youth in. As we all know, if we learn as a young child to put our seatbelt on and our family supports that, then we're going to be a family that wears seatbelts. The same with litter. If we really start to engage the younger generations as cleaner, picking up litter, and getting involved as good citizenry, then we're really going to see us move the needle. The annual requirements to participate in this, this is actually an example of what they want to see over a three-year period. From the logos and the event advertisements we have at the bottom, you can see Keep Norfolk Beautiful in partnership with some of our, our other partners, like Parks and Rec. We meet and exceed on an annual basis. So if they want five community cleanups, four beautification projects, we do that every year and then some. So we will meet the, the goals and the priorities that they would like for us to participate. This, I place in front of council, all, all of the events that we have just in the next, like, two months. So we have a lot going on regularly. We have over 270 adoptive spots across the city. On an annual basis, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of around 12,000 volunteers cleaning up litter. So we are, are doing the best we can to sort of stay on it and, and decrease the problem, which we have seen. We have new programs. We have the Green Bucket Brigade, which we've launched at Pretlow Library. I met with Tucker Library yesterday to talk about launching it on the South Side. And our hope is that each of the anchor branches and then the neighborhood branches will also be in participation with that. And that will yet be something else we can add to the checklist for the Greatest American Cleanup. That's really it. My hope in all things and all ways is always to have you all help promote our events and, and seek out opportunities to join us. Having you there brings a little cachet to our cleanups, as always. Councilman Clanton joined us not that long ago and picked up lots of bags of litter. It's an ongoing problem. We can clean up, as we all know. Unfortunately, it's almost like homelessness. We can clean it up, and then it's going to happen again, could happen the very next day. So the more we do, the more we raise awareness, the more we engage our youth, hopefully, the more we'll see that, that needle move. And I thank you for your time. And I'm really hoping we're going to get behind this and see this huge outpouring of people join us as part of the Greatest American Cleanup in advance of July 4th, 2026.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Doyle. I move that members of the council, a similar form, like in close meeting, March 4th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. You're just going to call the City Hall building, Mr. Smigel. You're just set out in clause 8 of subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Indian Youth Act as amended. Clause 8 is consultation with legal counsel to discuss a land use agreement, which is requiring, requiring the response. Mr. Clanton.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Vade.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel.
Aye.
All right, we're in close.